There we are, Sandy. Hey. Good morning, everyone. I like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, October 20th, 2025 to order. Our first order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. Charles, if you would, please.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic.
To the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
For all.
For all.
Thank you, Charles. So we're going back to old school COVID days with the all virtual meeting. We haven't had one of these in quite some time. The reason for same is that early voting started, well, started five minutes ago, I believe, and they're utilizing the conference room that we traditionally sit in and the room at the community center was, the other Zoom room was not available. So anyway. Next up, public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum on any item on the agenda? Anyone wishing to address on any item on the agenda? Hearing none. Let's move on to item three, approval of minutes. They, three dot one would be October 6th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve? And then we can go into discussion if there's any.
I'll make some.
Second. So, so and Lou, so and Lou, there you go, either way. Okay, any comments, questions, suggested changes?
No, not for me.
I had none. All right, we've got a motion on the floor. Let me try your minds, going back to the old way. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Harvard.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Woman Ruoff.
Aye.
And my vote will be aye as well. That motion carries. Item four, Parks and Recreation Director Pam Gary. Good morning, Pam. We've got, I think, a couple of items for you. Three items, is it? The first is four dot one, consider take possible action on bids for bus transportation for ski club trips to Mount Southington.
Morning, and yes, that's correct. We have three different quotes. One from Peter Pan, one from Academy Bus, and one from Daco. And we would like to get the approval to use the lowest bidder of Daco at 9,480.
Okay. Is there a motion for same?
I'll move it.
All right, here's Charles and Sandy. Any questions or comments? Lou, I think, didn't we ask one time if they needed chaperones that we might volunteer to go on this trip, as long as our tickets were paid for?
We haven't. We'll have to renew that.
Okay. All right, hearing no comments or questions, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Harvard.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
And my vote is an aye as well. Four dot two, consider take possible action to approve a fiscal year 26 capital improvement project for Jacobs Beach and Bitner Park.
Yes, this is a capital improvement project to replace all of the doors. And they, at Jacobs Beach, with the supply room and both women's and men's restroom doors. And at Bitner is the same thing, the concession area. It's got the women's and men's restroom, the electrical supply room door and the door below between the two garage. The garage doorways. And Happy Jacks is on the state contract. He came in under bid on both projects. We had $30,000 allotted for Bitner Park. He came in at 27,272. And we had 10,500 allotted for Jacobs Beach, and it came in at 10,272 there. So we would like to get the approval to use Happy Jacks.
That's great. Is there a motion?
I'm over.
Charles and Lou had his hand up, so. Comments or questions?
I should know this, but I'm just going to ask it. Companies that are on the state bid, the state list or whatever we call it, they've already been vetted by the state and references checked and all that. We don't have to do that. Is that correct?
Correct.
I'm not sure, but I think that as long, don't the items need to be on their state bid as well, the actual items? It's not just the vendor, is it? I think it's the items. But I'm not 100% sure.
I believe that it's, it is part of the items that he does. His company is replacing doors. And that's on the state bid.
The, the price of the doors is on the bid. Okay.
Yep.
All right. And, and if I can ask another one, the, the amount in the capital budget was specifically for doors. It wasn't for a larger, larger renovation project.
Nope, just for doors.
Cool. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. All right, anything further? Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Harvard.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner. Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you. Item four dot three, consider take possible action to approve the sale of an outdoor classroom. Pam?
Yes, I'm going to make Dave Castro really happy here this morning. One smile there, Dave.
That's our goal.
So prior to me being here, the outdoor classroom was purchased. I'm not clear as to what year that was. I'm assuming maybe it was 2020.
It was, it was, Pam, it was during COVID. They were purchased by the Board of Education to conduct, to have outdoor classrooms. We had kept one. I know they still have a couple up, I think, at some of the schools, but they were taking one down and we decided to take it in the event that it might come in handy either up at the Public Works facility or up at Bitner Park for, for storage reasons, but it, it was never utilized.
So it's been sitting in the back of Public Works, just out in the outdoor weather. The vendor, I did get, I was curious at one point whether or not we would consider trying to use it in the back of 52 Church. But the, the project there is still so unsettled that, you know, wasn't sure about that. And plus it would take up more parking and we need parking there. So the vendor has requested this, the purchase of it for 5,000. The floor is very warped. He still would like to purchase it for that amount. So I reached out to you. I followed the process, having Karen reach out to all the other departments to see if there was any desire to have it, and nobody wanted it. So thought I would get the approval from the Board of Selectmen to sell it. And again, it's up to the Board of Selectmen as to where that, those funds go, but I, I thought maybe we could put it into the program account, but that's your decision.
Got it. We'll, we'll make that determine, the determination later. Since this was not originally purchased with funds from a capital project or capital allocation for the town side or, or the parking wreck in particular, I think this would probably best fall to fund balance. But we'll wait, have Mary Jane weigh in on that. So the name of the, the, the vendor or?
Yeah, I don't. I'm sorry, I didn't put that in the memo of, of that particular gentleman. I could look it up quickly, but.
All right, well, we, we, we trust, we can certainly add that next week, next month, unless you get it.
Yep, I could, before the end of this meeting, I'll have the name if you want. Oh, I have it right here.
Okay.
Have it right here. Let's see. It is. They're called Z-Metra Clear Span Structures.
Great. All right. So is there a motion to approve the sale of the outdoor classroom to the aforementioned vendor? Any amount of $5,000?
I'll move it.
Sandy and Charles, okay. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Harvard.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner. Sue, we didn't hear you.
Yeah, we're voting on just whether or not we can sell it. We're not discussing the, where the proceeds go. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That'll be determined.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
That motion carries. Pam, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great day, everybody.
Thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
Okay, item five, Police Department. It does say Chief Chris Masti, but it looks like we've got Lieutenant Bernier handling.
Guys are stuck with me instead. Yes, the, the chief tasked me to handle this. He's in the neighborhood, but I'll be handling this today.
Great. All right. Five dot one is consider take possible action to approve the purchase of 10 body armor vests for $10,443.30 from Blue Tactical LLC. Jim, the floor is yours.
Sure. So as you guys know, the, the police department is outfitted with body armor for all of our employees, obviously, an essential piece of safety equipment that is, is required to be worn via policy and for obvious safety reasons. So our vests basically have a five-year shelf life, both in warranty and in degradation of the material that would degrade the safety value of it over time via the light it wears, the type of wear has sweat and moisture and all these things break down the armor over time. So we have, the department split up into basically every, every year, we know who's up for renewal based on their five-year lifecycle. This year, we have 12 officers that are due for renewals. We're looking to purchase after we went through all of our research with the appropriate ballistic level that we feel required for everyone. Point blank is the vest that we typically operate with, and we've been working with their regional rep as far as the exact model and retailer that we're going to be purchasing through. There are only two available retailers in Connecticut, and one of them has been determined to be completely unreliable to us. They, they don't respond, they don't answer phone calls. So we've kind of made them, we kind of invalidated them as a, as a realistic vendor. Blue Tactical being the last remaining, in essence, becomes a sole source. We've negotiated a cost of per vest through the regional rep, buying it through Blue Tactical, which is out of Westfield, Massachusetts, for, what's the total price? For, for 1,044.33 cents per vest. That will include the ballistic material as well as two carriers for each officer. So for the 10 that we need for the male officers, we're looking for 10,433.30. The remaining two vests are a little unique. They're for our female officers and we, we purchase those through a different outfit. Well, right now, we're looking to outfit 10 male officers with 10 new vests that are up for renewal for that total cost.
Great. Thank, thank you, Tim, for taking my obvious question out. You had mentioned 12 and there was only 10, so.
Yeah, yeah, so, yep. The other two, again, we, there's a proprietary vendor that sells a vest that's fit for women. So we, so we operate differently for them.
You got it, you got it. All right. Is there a motion to approve this purchase?
I have a motion, but just a quick question, too.
Sandy and Lou. And Lou, question?
Please.
Hey, I, I'm just sort of curious what happens to these old ones? Do the companies take them back and re purpose them in some way? Like what, are they just purely unusable and, and need to be disposed of or recycled?
Different things happen at different times. Sometimes the companies will take them back. Sometimes they repurpose them overseas. They might go other places. They have worked out, sometimes they get used for demonstration purposes and we'll actually shoot them up and we'll, we'll, we'll see what the ballistic value of them is even with the degradation, but it helps giving, it helps give officers a little more confidence in their ability to still, to still function, especially when they're, when they're not expired. At times, at times, they will get donated to, to other, other need places or, or they'll just get destroyed. So there, there's a variety of ways that they get disposed of at the end.
Okay, interesting. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Harvard.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner. Yep, we're taking out his yes. Where are you? Did we? Did we lose Sue? Looks like we lost Sue.
Connection was going in and out.
Yeah, we couldn't hear her very clearly. All right. So, so selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Tim. Let's give Sue a couple of minutes to see if she can get back on. Because I think this presentation is one she would want to, want to hear. Let me try calling her. Sue has asked us to go on. She's having trouble with her network connection, so, and the good news is, because this is Zoom call, it's being recorded, so she'll be able to see this presentation a little bit later. So item six, Janice, our Town Engineer. And six dot one is a presentation from Tony Garrow from Beta. And it's a report on the Guilford Pavement Management Program. Janice, do you want to tee it up and?
Sure. Yep. Good morning. As you may recall, we engaged with Beta to do pavement management study and report for us. It's probably about two years ago now that we engaged them. And Tony Garrow from Beta is here to present kind of the findings of that report. We work closely with them to provide the streets that were relevant in terms of the ones that are town roads that were responsible for maintenance of. And to go out and do an assessment of all the roads and so that we have this for, you know, for capital planning purposes, as well as deciding which roads really need to get, what treatment. It ranges from preservation all the way into, you know, reconstruction in terms of recommendations, as you'll see from the presentation. If you recall, for the past seven years since I've been here as Town Engineer, I've been requesting about $500,000 per year for capital improvements for road improvements. Specifically, in the past, my understanding was that we primarily just funded the chip sealing program through the Public Works, I think, operating budget for the most part, and continue to do that now. But you'll see from the presentation that there really is a need to, to kind of consider all different pavement improvement measures for our roads and perhaps we need to start considering even more and more investment in these improvements. So I'm going to hand it over to Tony Garrow, who has a PowerPoint presentation to run you through kind of what they did and, and what their findings were.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the introduction, Janice. And thank you for the opportunity to come in front of you this morning. I'd like to say preface that I'm in Westerly and we're having some heavy winds, so there's been a little flickering, so hopefully I won't lose my connection. With your permission, I'd like to share my screen so I can move into the PowerPoint.
Yeah, I'll leave that to the technical resources here.
Okay. I should be able to do this. I have to send a request. And then it needs to be turned on. I think I'm good to go.
Yep. Give us a second here. We've got new resources manning the meeting now, so. But fortunately, Karen is here to provide guidance.
And can you share, see my screen?
Not yet.
I can try again.
Yeah, it may be on our end, okay? There we go.
You're good now?
You're good. Yep, thank you. Good job.
All right, I'm just going to maximize this. Okay, maybe that's the largest I can get. Oh, no, here we go. Okay, great. All right, you still good?
We're good.
Yes.
All right, excellent. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you again. I actually, I was thinking about this presentation last week, and this is actually my third presentation that I've done in front of Guilford. We actually started working with the town a little over 10 years ago, when there was a contract through SCROG. So that was when the initial pavement management project was implemented. So quite some time ago, but we have a lot of good information that's been collected, you know, over the past, say, 10 to 15 years, and, and technology, you know, has certainly changed since we did that first project, which I'll get into in the, in the presentation. Feel free, if you'd like, to ask questions along the way. I'm flexible with that, so I'm happy to stop at any time if you'd like. So we've been working with the town now since the fall of last year. That's when we conducted the initial pavement management inspection process. But just a quick overview on, you know, the goals and objectives and benefits of pavement management. You know, ultimately, you know, your roads, your roadway infrastructure, very important investment to the, not only the, the road conditions and roughness and rideability, but also to the public safety in that matter. And also with Guilford being a coastal community, economic development. I know living here in Westerly, a lot of that is, in the summertime, you rely on your main roads to be very, in very good service. But ultimately, the, the program and the data that's provided will allow you to plan accordingly. Schedule the appropriate treatments at the right time, like Janice alluded to. There are some opportunities that you can integrate preservation techniques to certain roadways, if they're appropriate. And ultimately, you know, providing the foundation for decision-making. So you have all this data that's been collected, database, GIS mapping, that's available to help with the planning process. And ultimately, it allows you to be proactive. So the pavement management deterioration curve that you see here, this graphic is, is really the, the whole foundation of the program is about the pavement, your pavement deterioration curve. So all roads, once they're paved and proved, say you do a mill and overlay, you know, they're starting at a score of 100. So all roadways within the program were scored at zero to 100, 100 being a road in very good condition. And then once you get, you can see, once you get below 40, 55 down, that's when roads are going to be in poor condition and will most likely require more expensive proposition to repair that, that roadway. The pavement condition assessment, that was first and foremost. So that is the, really the linchpin to the whole project, is collecting that information that allows us to score each roadway and have those 0 to 100 scores that are shown on the deterioration curve. This allows us now to better understand the conditions across the network and the repairs and strategies that we are recommending through the GIS and data analysis that's performed. Ultimately, we can provide a backlog of improvements, which you'll see further on in the presentation, and then develop a prioritized capital improvement plan. So the project essentially is really a five-step process. The first step being setting up the program, which is really the GIS network, understanding the ownership of your roadways. We evaluated approximately 146 centerline miles of road. That's all set up in a GIS mapping environment. A lot of the data that we had previously was very helpful, so we were able to leverage the previous studies that we had performed in the past. And then performing the, the pavement management inspection process, which is when we're out in the roads, collecting all of the data. And then conducting the analysis. And that's when we get into the different scoring of the roads, the recommended improvements and the associated costs with those. And then four and five are really, those are things that are happening regularly. So you have the condition information collected this past fall. And now you, every year, you're reprioritizing, I'll say, kind of shuffling the deck a bit, depending upon the prioritization process, repairs, the deterioration of the roads. Some roadways this winter, for instance, if you have a severe freeze thaw cycle, some roads may deteriorate at a faster rate and become more critical to the community from a planning perspective. And then we're assisting Janice and, and the department with updating the program as needed. So as mentioned, the, the program focused on the 146.25 miles of accepted roadways. Those are paved roadways within the community. You also have unaccepted roads, private roads and state roads. But the program focused on the 146.25 miles of road. So in terms of the technology that we used, I mentioned earlier on that this is our third inspection that we've completed, and each, each time, the technology seems to be getting better. Back before COVID, 10 years ago, we did a manual inspection, which was a visual observation and could be subjective. Now with the LiDAR-based technology, what, what we're able to do now is drive all the roadways and collect the information. You can see here on top of our data collection vehicle is a LiDAR sensor. We also collect imagery that are available every 20 feet. So the LiDAR information coupled with the imagery information is through Civil AI, our partner's AI technology, is able to generate a 0 to 100 score. Ultimately, what we call a road surface rating or RSR for each roadway is generated. So really cool technology, cutting edge, cutting edge, and Civil is very well-known across the region. Here's just some examples of roads, and these photos are actually from that forward-facing imagery that we're able to get every 20 feet. So you can see the quality of the imagery is, is very good. Here's an example of two good roads that we consider in good condition. Millstone Drive, a score of 96, so that's at the top of the curve. Elm Street, 94, that's also at the top of the curve. So projects that, roads that were most likely recently repaired. And now you're getting into fair or moving down the curve a little bit further. We got Jacobs Lane at 75 and Beaverhead Road at 60. Next slide here, now we're showing roads that are in poor condition. So you're starting to see more, more distresses in the roadway that you can see, more linear cracking, longitudinal cracking, and then potholes even in some locations. So now you can see the differences in a road that's scoring, you know, at the top of the curve, all the way down to the road that's a 20 for that. And that's in a major repair category. So the repair bands and conditions, this is essentially where all the decisions are being made in terms of how the roadways are classified. So starting here at the top of the curve, like I mentioned, the roads that scored in that 90 to 100 range, those are roadways that today, nothing is being recommended. However, with the built-in deterioration within the GIS software, so the roads are deteriorating ever, actually every day, but to look at it more broadly, about two points per year. So they're going to, a road that's a 100 today would be a 98 next year at this time. And then you're getting into from deferred maintenance or do nothing into routine maintenance, and that's typically where we're looking at crack ceiling, fog ceiling, different rejuvenators. There's a lot of different technologies out there, especially in that preservation world. Preventative maintenance next, 60 to 75, where you're into more surface treatments, whether that be chip seal, micro-surfacing, shim and overlays. And then once you get further down into the roads that are scoring below 60, now you're getting into the minor rehab and maintenance. now you're getting into the minor rehab and major rehab techniques, so more expensive, more life years added to those roadways, and this is typically, you'll see, you know, milling overlays, leveling overlays, reclamation and reconstruction type activities. So right now, your overall network score is a seventy-two point two eight. So across the region, we see on average about sixty-eight to seventy-four is, is typical within Connecticut and New England in general. So you're right, kind of right in the middle right now in terms of your overall network score. And then in terms of your estimated backlog of improvements, you can see what we're estimating here. And this is basically right on in terms of the unit prices that we've established, then the repair bands. So you can see the distribution across the network in terms of where your roads currently stand. So you can see here, most of your roads right now are in that preventative maintenance or preservation area, about forty percent of your roads. And Janice mentioned earlier, now you do have opportunities now to consider some preservation techniques and further extend those roadways over time and saving the community money. Here's another chart, just breaking down that same table that you saw on the previous slide. You know, again, you've got about forty percent in the preventative maintenance, thirty-five percent in routine maintenance, which is good. That's, you're looking at a very high percentage of roads, and then you do have those in minor rehab, a little over seventeen percent, and major rehab, very small in the major rehab. But one thing I would like to just remind you is that it is a moving target, so roads will shift from one band to another. Here's an example of the repairs strategies across the network. So within, I mentioned GIS is a great tool. So now we're able to thematically display the different repair strategies across the network. So each roadway, as mentioned, is scored zero to one hundred. So we can drill down to the roadway segment, look at the roadway as a whole, drill into specific locations using the LiDAR and imagery that's available. So you have a lot of good, flexible information that allows you to analyze the information on a lot of different ways. The, the platform that we've deployed to the town, and, and this is being deployed also to the communities within the SCROG region, is a RTIS online or web-based tool that allows you to visualize all the information from your desktop or from your phone. So the information here, the seventy-two point two eight score that I showed previously on the previous slides, that's breaking down, looking at your network, and then you also have the road repair history. So as part of the process, we've also been maintaining the road history within the network. So that allows you to track work you've completed. It also allows you to track the performance of repairs over time, but it's a nice user-friendly interface that allows you to interact with the data. And this is zooming into the information a little bit more, so you can continue to zoom in to the dashboard. Down the road, if you'd like, I can always do a live demonstration of this, but these are screenshots from the interface, so you can continue to drill into the data and get more detail as you zoom in, similar to Google Maps. And then we zoomed in one more time, and all these dots that you see here scattered along the, the roadway, those are the, the points every twenty feet that have those photos that I mentioned earlier. So you continue to start high level, look at the network, drill into an area, then you can even drill in even further and look at each roadway segment. And then this is just an example of the road repair history that I mentioned, so you can look at dating back to twenty twenty-one. You've done a little over, almost thirty-six miles of repair, and that, that's ranging from, you know, from crack ceiling all the way up to major rate rehab activities. So forecasting out where you are today. So this slide here, this tends to be the one that gets most of the attention when I do these presentations. So right now, as I mentioned, your overall score is a seventy-two point two eight. So that's our, our baseline score. And then looking forward into the future, we can estimate what you need to maintain your current score, or if your goals are to, to continue to improve your score. So this gives you a tool to forecast out the different repairs over time, different budget scenarios. What this pie chart is representing on the left is showing the distribution of the repairs that are, that are within the model or that specific scenario. So this particular model that we're running is a very balanced program, ranging from, you know, routine maintenance to preservation to major rehab. I like doing this, running this type of model, at least initially, so you can get a better feel for a balanced program versus being more of a major rehab or preservation type model, but we can run a series of models at your request. So basically, in a nutshell, we're looking at about one point five million to maintain, and that's this line here across the middle, about one point five. And then in order to improve and continue to improve your overall RSR, then you're looking at incrementally two million to two point five million annually. So in terms of capital planning, as mentioned, this is a fluid process, so the capital planning or prioritization of roadways is done and defined over time. Ultimately, the goal is to have at least a three-year plan with a solid list of roadways for the first two years, and then make sure you're coordinating in different other elements of the roadway, such as sidewalks, curb ramps, utilities. These are all things that need to be considered when you're developing the plan. Cost-benefit value analysis. So this takes into account beyond just the road surface rating or zero to one hundred score of the road. It also accounts for your volume of traffic or the importance of this roadway to the community. It also accounts for the repair, the cost of the repair, and then the life years added to that roadway. So what's nice about the CBV, it gives you an industry standard method for developing a score for each roadway within the town from a priority standpoint. So a lot of good data here that you can use to analyze and help prioritize your roadways across the community. And then ultimately, just in conclusion, so you have a comprehensive inventory of your roads. Each roadway has been classified and has a zero to one hundred score. There's a recommendation of the type of repair and an estimated cost. It's designed to better, help you better manage your, your, the money that you do have to manage your roadway program. And also, like I mentioned, we're capable of assessing different types of scenarios to, to help you manage the budgets that you do have and look at the most cost-effective ways to maintain your roadways moving forward. So with that, thank you. Happy to take any, any questions. Hopefully, I got through that. I didn't, I know you have limited time, so happy to answer any questions.
Tony, well done. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Very clear, very clear and easy to understand. Appreciate it. I have a couple of questions. Particularly, I think there was, towards the end, you started to talk about the difference in the road, the usage on some of the roads. How does that play into the, the the severity and the need for us to act on some of the roads versus the roads that are more traveled than those that are less traveled?
Yeah, I think that's a good, that's a good question. And this cost-benefit value analysis does provide you with a mechanism to do that. But, but in terms of the roads that are critical to the town, so you have emergency response, safety, economic development, you know, access to schools, public facilities, you know, those are roadways that are very important to the community. So those are always the ones that you want to be focusing on initially. And then you need to blend in your local roads, your cul-de-sacs, subdivision roads as well, so you can develop a balanced plan. But as you develop your capital improvement plan and you look at the priorities on an annual basis, it always starts with the more critical roadways to the town. And even if it's a road that's in fairly good condition, those roadways should be considered for preservation or crack ceiling, just to extend the life of those roadways.
I had another question, and that is, it looks as if we're repairing about seven miles per year, which are significant repairs, right? Which, with one hundred and forty-six miles that you've identified, that's a twenty-year lifecycle to get to them all at the current rate. By going to your recommended one point five million a year, or even one million a year, what, do you have any estimates on what that would get us in terms of road miles repaired?
I don't have, I can get you that number. I don't have the exact number, but I can certainly follow up with you and get you some numbers on what that would include.
Great. Thank you, Tony.
I can provide numbers, I can provide lane miles or centerline miles for each of those scenarios.
Got it. All right, that's it. Lou?
Yeah, yeah. Janice, actually, this is for you. I mean, in addition to the, to the budgeted line item for road repair, summer, winter, we have bonded funds from time to time, right? And we get state money for particular projects. I'd sort of be interested to know, like, on a kind of a five-year basis, because especially the bonded money and the state money probably comes in episodically, right? Does that sort of balance off to closer to one million or one and a half million over a five-year window? It's kind of, I don't expect to necessarily have that right here, but I'd be curious to those numbers.
Yeah, no, we could definitely take a look at that. We do rely on state funding. You know, primarily those reconstruction projects, like we just did in Up Plains Room.
And those, I guess, are probably either, either access roads or through roads. I'm sure there's a technical word for them.
They have to be collector roads in order to be eligible for that funding, so, you know, and, and those projects tend to be a little more involved and complicated and expensive because you are meeting state standards to a certain level, even though they say that we can build them to our standards, they tend to impose requirements on us. But, yeah, we certainly have to take into consideration all those different funding sources, including sometimes we're able to use loss of funding as we did in the past few years because we had, we had some monies left over, and, and now we're getting a different funding mechanism through those of annually. So, yeah, we're gonna consider all those different funding, not just the capital funds, and also like I said earlier, Public Works, you know, we did all this work in coordination with Public Works because we, we team up in trying to make sure we're applying the right things to the right roads. Their operating budget has, has items in it for more of the preservation type applications as well. So we, we need to consider all those funds in our plan.
Okay, awesome. So I don't know if, if, if that's something we could get, you know, put like the past five years and, and more difficult, like what the projection is, and then that may be a little unfair, but if it's available, it'd be great to know.
Okay, yeah, I'll try and put that together, especially in light of our.
Matt, I do have one more question. So don't, don't take this the wrong way, but it just needs to be asked, right? I take it you, you, your operation is a diagnostics analysis consultants, right? You're providing this information to us and other folks. That's your business?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you're not, you're not associated with any paving contractors?
No, we're not. No, no. So just, I didn't really get into our experience across, and when we've done over fifty of these projects in Connecticut, more than a hundred across the region. And, yeah, so the, the, in terms of the different repair strategies, we need to know, we need to understand the repairs. So we do interact, you know, with the vendors because we need to understand, is this treatment going to be appropriate for this particular roadway? And there's a lot of different, in particular, when it comes to preservation, there's a lot of different techniques now that are out there. The good news is that in talking with the state, they, their, their goal is to establish a preservation program that is going to provide funding to municipalities, but it would have to be a preservation-based treatment. So that, that's something that's hopefully going to be coming soon. But no, we're not, we're not, we work independently. We do partner with like Civil AI, who provided us with the LiDAR technology, those companies we do partner with.
Sure, sure. Now that I understand. All right, all right, thanks.
Yeah, no problem.
You're muted.
Anyone else? Charles, Sue, or Sandy?
Good.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Hi, Anthony. Tony, this is Dave.
Hey, Dan.
Public Works.
How you doing?
Good, how are you? Could you go back, could you go back to that slide right before the planning and prioritization? I think it was right there.
This one?
Nope, seventeen.
This one?
Yep. So I just wanted to point out to the Board of Selectmen that you see the jump from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four. That's from Janice and I coming together and coming up with these different pavement preservation processes, like fog ceiling, crack ceiling, instead of just chip sealing everything. And that's where we get that giant jump from. And you see twenty-five, it goes up again. So it's a really cost-effective solution that we're using here, and we keep looking for what's, you know, what's, we can get more bang for our buck for the town, but I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, that big number is, is because, you know, we're coming up with these different processes to, to preserve the pavement.
That's a great, great point, Dave. So I'd go back to Tony. Are those types of improvements, those types of techniques factored into the analysis that you guys have provided as it relates to cost to repair?
Yes, yeah, it's in terms of like the, the forecast model that we ran, this one here, for instance. So the distribution of the repairs in the model account for preservation. And we could run a different, a preservation-based model that would really even emphasize those treatments more. And for instance, you could find, you could be moving up your RSR score even quicker over time. Over time, I think the best way to look at it is to integrate preservation. Like David alluded to, that's very important. I think it's, it's very prudent on the town's part to do that. And to extend the life of roads is just as important as repairing roads that are in poor condition.
Yeah, just, I just want to point out that, that, you know, Dave and I work with data on the types of treatments that we would utilize in our town and also review the costs of, you know, in terms of our experience with it, so that, you know, we're not just taking anything they're saying. They worked with what we typically use and are considering using going forward, so it, it, it's really geared towards Guilford's program.
Great. Well, with our upcoming capital budget planning meetings coming up, I'm sure we'll see some reflection of this, this report and recommendation in, in your asks. So. Anyone else? Tony, thank you very much. Well done on the presentation. Janice, thank you as well.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, item seven, Finance Director, Mary Jane. Oh, can we get rid, here we go.
Morning.
Good morning, MJ.
So I'd like to start with revenues at the end of September.
He just said, good place to start.
Oh, I'm sorry. As far as revenues, we are fifty-one and a half percent collected through September. Not too much to report, although I do want to note that the same time last year I came back to you to let you know that there was some state funding that we had budgeted for that we would not be receiving, if you remember, that was reflected in our final numbers as of June thirty. This year, I'm coming back to you to let you know that some of the numbers we budgeted based on the information we were given from the state at the time have indeed come in higher for us. So as we move through the year, we are receiving more in town aid road and in our ECS, so about three hundred thousand dollars more than budgeted. So hopefully that makes up for last year's loss, but we'll see that through the, as we go through the year. Other than that, I don't really have too much to comment on revenues at this point. Other than that, I don't really have too much to comment on revenues at this point.
Just a quick, quick comment and question. MJ, we just finished talking about the various buckets of support we have for our road maintenance program. Can you give us a history of the town aid road allocations over the past five years? If, if Janice hasn't already emailed you to ask for the same, same information?
Listening, we can do that, yes.
Thank you. Anyone else on revenues? I would suspect expenses next.
Sure. On the expense side, we are just about thirty percent spent. One thing I'd like to note regarding the line for encumbrances, our new purchasing department has now put forth purchase orders for utilities. So that increases our encumbrances this year. At the moment, it's about three hundred thousand dollars. So that does make a difference in the percent obligated from last year to this year. Last year, the utilities would not have been included in those numbers. This year they are. So the num, the numbers in that column would reflect that. That does make a difference. A significant difference in some of the budget lines that have utilities. Other than that, we're pretty much where we expect to be at this point. I'll take questions.
Anyone have any questions of MJ on the expense side? Anything that we need to take a look at or keep an eye on over time that, that might change, particularly fire?
Well, fi, fire is a little bit higher than, than they were. I know they have a presentation to give to the Board of Selectmen on how they're going to mitigate their budget this year. So we'll, we'll wait to hear from them on that.
Matt, I'm gonna log back in in two minutes. I got, I'm getting called up front. I'll be right back.
Okay. Alright, anything further for MJ? Any other questions on expenses? Okay, next up, capital, this must be Board of Finance quarterly reports on the capital funds, huh?
Yes.
Anything, anything of note? Any significant changes in either of those funds?
Uh, no, not, not significant. You know, we, on the town side, if you remember when I reported on the bonding that we did in August, it was almost primarily all Board of Ed. The town does have some more significant expenses in this past year, so our next bonding will reflect that.
Got it. Okay, any questions? No? Warrants, we'll get those tonight. I know at Board of Finance meeting. Medical?
Okay, on the medical side, we seem to be tracking pretty well this year. We, September, we had about one point three, one point four million. Our average should be about one point two. Again, I'll note that we are covering that the first part, that the employees are paying the first part of their deductible and the town would pick that up later on. We've received, doing very well receiving our stop loss claim reimbursements. We've gotten to a really good rhythm with that. At the moment, I only have a receivable of about three thousand dollars down significantly from where I reported the last few months. You'll see on catastrophic claims, we're at seven point two percent at, at this point. Our overall claims that have hit eighty-seven point five are up two members versus last month. And our claims over the full stop loss at a hundred and seventy-five thousand is up two members at this point. So we are tracking about where we were last year for that. Overall, I'm projecting at the moment a surplus of about four hundred thousand dollars. We still have, you know, less than a month in, in our reserve. That the difference is, is made up primarily in an increase of our RBNR that went up to one point three eight million dollars as of June thirty. So that has been taken out of our fund balance and set aside for that purpose. So truly, our overall funding in this is really the one twenty-three plus the one point three eight that covers outstanding.
IBNR.
IBNR, yeah.
Great.
But we're tracking much better this year than we were last year, even at this time in, in the year.
Hopefully that'll carry over into budgetary projections for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Correct.
Any, any questions for MJ on medical?
I'm all set.
Okay. Great. Alright MJ, thank you.
I have a couple more items?
Yep, yep, I, I just was looking at that, that's right. Seven dot one, it's considered take possible action to transfer thirty-seven thousand one hundred and eleven dollars to reserve for personnel, MJ?
If you remember, we recently came back to you with a request to move money from reserve for personnel into a whole list of budgetary line items due to the contract finalizing contracts for GA and IAFS. At that time, we did not take into account to include the impact of that increases of that increase on the fire department overtime and replacement salary lines. That does make an impact there when we have an increase, was not originally budgeted. So I'm coming back to you today with a request for those two particular lines, fire department overtime, fire department replacement salaries, both out of reserve from personnel.
Thank you MJ. Is there a motion to approve the transfer of thirty-seven thousand one hundred and eleven from reserve for personnel into the line items as described by MJ?
I will move that.
Second.
Sue and Charles, okay. Comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici's back.
Hi.
Selectman Haberda.
Hi.
Selectwoman Renner.
Hi.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Hi.
But that motion carries. Thank you. MJ, seven dot two, consider take possible action to transfer two thousand dollars from the planning and zoning operating budget.
So when I came forward with my request to transfer surpluses from June thirty twenty-five into carried and force, I had forgotten, to be honest, to include the planning and zoning request that Ann had asked for. My letter requests a transfer of two thousand dollars, which is for a conference that she will be attending this year. If you remember correctly, last year we, for this budget year, we, we cut those lines dramatically. She has, since I've put this letter together, requested the full six thousand dollars that she has as a surplus at the end of last year to cover additional training and education for her staff in this year. So I put that forward for consideration on your end.
So the motion here would be to transfer six thousand from FY twenty-five Planning and Zoning Operating Budget to carried and forced?
Correct.
Okay, is there such a motion?
I'm moved.
A second?
I'll second it.
Second it. Given that there is even more turn, there's, there's additional turnover in that department as a result of a recent resignation. I think this is gonna be money well spent for a relatively new and inexperienced staff save for, for Ann, so.
Yeah, and I will note, when we carry funds over, the department heads can only use those funds for the intended purpose. So this would all be used for education. It cannot be used for anything else.
The, the note in, on on our packet here, it says two thousand.
Correct. I noted that I had two thousand. Ann, Ann requested after I wrote this letter for the full six thousand she has as surplus in her budget last year.
Alright, I don't know if we have to change this. Okay, it'll be in a minute, so.
Well, that was the motion. The, the, the motion is at six, so.
Right, right. I heard the six. I was just, you know, rereading it, trying to see where. Okay.
We need to add it to the agenda to vote on it like that?
No, I don't think so. We can, we, we've, we've modified. This is just a staff memo to us. If the motion carries it at six, we're fine.
Okay.
Alright, so any further questions? Let me try, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Hi.
Selectman Haberda.
Hi.
Selectwoman Renner.
Hi.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Hi.
And I would make that as well. So that, that motion carries nicely. MJ, thank you very much. If not before, I'll see you at tonight's Board of Finance meeting.
Tidoc.
Got it. Item eight, Public Works, Dave Castro, eight dot one, consider take possible action to replace a compressor at Public Works. Or is yours, sir?
Hi, good morning. So the compressor that the mechanics use that feeds the entire shop for the air tools and everything has finally rotted out. It's starting to leak. The compressor itself is thirty-five years old, so I think we got our money's worth out of the machine. So we're looking to replace it with, with money from our building maintenance budget. It's the compressor from Napa on the state bid is eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. And that is a piece of equipment that can be moved.
Okay, excellent.
I was just gonna ask that question, so. Because if it lasts another thirty-five years, hopefully it will make its way north.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there, is there, is there a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second.
A second?
Outside, good.
Question?
Yeah, just quick, I, I'm, the invoice confuses me just a little bit. I missed something here. It says the price is eighteen thousand, but the net is eight thousand?
So, so that the price that you and the public would pay for that?
Okay.
My being on state contract and the pricing we get from Napa, the total that we pay is only the eight thousand.
Everybody hears about the state contract quite a bit, and there's a real specific example of why we use that from time to time.
Absolutely. And what Napa has actually done for us is because, you know, they're right here in Guilford, we use them so much, they're actually adding three percent off of the state contract for us as a town. So we're actually saving more money.
Awesome. Well, good, 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 good work. Thank you.
Thank you, great.
Anything further? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Hi.
Selectman Haberda.
Hi.
Selectwoman Renner.
Hi.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Hi.
And I am an I as well. That motion carries. Dave, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item nine, Economic Development Director John Chirutis for a little presentation, update from, from John.
Hey, good morning everyone. I'll be brief. I just want to provide some early feedback from the the weekend event, the Gilmore Girls Fan Fest event that occurred on the green. Was a little challenging with the, you know, King's Rally coming in as well. But we, I think we made it through and survived. The business, early response from the businesses was that they were jammed. And no surprise, both the merchants and the restaurants. So very positive feedback so far from there. We handled parking as best we could at St. George. It was a little challenging with some of the rally attendees driving in without stopping to talk to us. And others that were very courteous and sought parking elsewhere. St. George had three funerals on Saturday. In addition, we parked about a hundred and fifty Gilmore attendees into a lot. The lot went to capacity. We raised significant funds for St. George. And in addition, we also asked the attendees of the Gilmore event to make donation to Guilford Youth and Family Services. I'm waiting to get that number on donation. I'll bring that back for next meeting, hopefully. Also, some funds went into the community center as well from the event. So we'll get those numbers back to you. But interested in your selectmen's feedback, any comments?
Yeah, John, I was out of town for Saturday, but Friday I did, well, you and I made opening remarks and then hung around and, and talked to a lot of the participants who are, who are grateful and thankful that we were allowing them to come back to Guilford after having such a great time last year. Just let me read to you a piece of an email that we got last night, yesterday, late yesterday from one of the, one of the merchants on the green. And it's, I'm very impressed with how well everything worked out this weekend. We now know that Guilford Green can host up to eight hundred and fifty Gilmore Girls fans, plus at least a thousand protesters at the same time. I didn't even, I didn't hear any complaining about parking. And then it, it, the businesses, the restaurants all had amazing opportunities this weekend, and I thank everyone, and I think everyone did well. And the word on the street is that Gilmore Girls organizers want to come back to Guilford very badly. And apparently the executive, the organizer announced at the meeting, the, the, the first gathering yesterday morning that the, they are going to do their best to ensure that they come back. So I, I think it just, it went very well. I talked to one of the owners at Char and Lemon. They, they had, they had trouble, they, they had some trouble. They had to order more provisions so over the weekend and get special deliveries on stuff. Good problem to have for a restaurant here in town, so.
I'll just say that I drove through several times on Friday and it went down on Saturday shortly after the march was dispersing and everything looked great and, you know, sure, what parking spots were available were, were being used, but the traffic flow was fine, the streets looked very festive and I looked, it looked good just to the average person, me.
Yeah, I, I, Susan, were you gonna say something?
No.
No, okay. Yeah, I just want to comment, it just, to me, it was just such an example of how, how great our community is that these two events could, you know, function in, and operate side by side. And, you know, there, there was even another event going on at the Fairground. The Keeping Society had another event down at the Quarry. It's just remarkable how our, our community is able to adapt and have such a successful event for both visitors and their own communities. So yeah. It was a struggle, I'm sure. There was a lot of traffic and all that kind of stuff, but we did it again. It was great.
Yeah. Yeah, great shout out to our Police Department and Park and Rec for all all Pam's team did. Great response, keeping order, keeping things moving. It was really good.
Yeah, and I was just gonna ask you, was there any, I don't need to hear if there's anything minor, but there, there were no major police incidents?
No, there was a couple skirmishes here and there between, I know some rally, rally attendees weren't very kind. And were kind of really pumped up. So some words flew, but there was no blood drawn. Everybody walked away.
I have an observation as well.
Kind of, kind of ironic that Guilford Peace Alliance participants would be that kind of that aggressive. And I, I did hear that at least one of the protesters or a couple of protesters tried to sneak in under the tent. But that was quick, quickly remedied, so.
I could just comment to you. I, I was around all weekend trying to manage the, the use at the community center and and also security at the green. I, it was amazing how there wasn't much backup at all, considering all those people around there. I mean, I drove freely through, through the green. I did talk firsthand to the staff at Hole in Wall, Hole in the Wall, and they were just so incredibly happy. They said that they had not done this great of business in, in, in a while. And people were just respectful and kind, and there was just a great vibe.
Yeah, I was, I just commented, thanks Pam, I was just want to comment on, I was working, working at St. George parking, parking cars and trying to keep that flow going there. And the attendees were all very courteous, respectful, happy to be back. They came from as far away as Hawaii, California, Florida, Maine. A lot of visitors from Pennsylvania, Midwest as well. That was, it was, you know, it was, it was really neat. And some, some of the attendees who, who live afar now were actually, had lived in Connecticut, I found before, and love, love the opportunity to come back and visit with this event, so.
And I was really proud of the town, so proud because the people loved it here. They just loved our, our town and how quaint and the, the green, just, it made me really proud.
Yeah, and we ordered up the perfect weather, the perfect fall. All good.
All right. Anything else, John?
No, that's it.
Okay, I, I, I think it's worth noting that we haven't, we haven't had a report a little while on, on, for economic development activity. This is going to be a monthly, we're going back to the monthly reports. So I think it's one thing that we probably haven't talked about as, as a group, at least at, in our meetings, is the approval by planning and zoning for Guilford Village West, which I think by, by all estimates will be the single largest development project in the history of the town with a hundred and sixty-two units of housing and somewhat significant commercial development on, on Route One, so. I think yesterday we were, many of us were together at a forum for the League of Women Voters, and managing that kind of growth is going to be one of the things. And I know, Charles, you've talked about this before, what's, you know, what kind of impact is there going to be from a development of this size, so.
Absolutely, I mean, you know, and how it relates to the housing issue in town and everything. This is some major growth that we're going to be faced and, you know, hopefully it will, will have a positive effect on our tax base and we'll be able to manage it so that, you know, not only the new folks that are going to be filling those apartments, but the rest of the community can find a way to continue the the great way of life we already have in our community and welcoming community.
Yeah, just a comment, we, I was speaking with the developer last week, the the projects moving, moving forward now, they've got equipment on site and clearing what they have to, and he did share, he's got some, he's locking down some of the retail entities that are going to occupy the space on Route One, and hopefully within a couple of weeks, once those contracts are signed, we can start to share that. And I can't share it now, but I think you'll be, you'll be happy with some of the retail names that'll, that'll be in that, that front area on Route One.
Great. All right, John, thank you very much.
All right, have a good day. Thank you.
You too as well. Item ten, Environmental Engineer Kevin McGee, ten dot one is consider to take possible action to refer to town meeting the conservation easements for the Bluffhead subdivision, section nine. Kevin, floor is yours.
Okay, we started discussing this at the last meeting, went over this, give a quick reminder of this project to everybody. That back in twenty, two thousand and nine, the subdivision was approved by Planning and Zoning Commission and the Wetlands Commission. In twenty twelve, the contractor came back to change, our developer came back to change some of the language regarding the conservation easement to remove the split rail fence and allow posts to be installed at the easement border. The conservation easement is a twenty-five foot buffer between the property and the wetlands, which runs along the, these people's properties. There's four properties with the, obtaining the conservation easements, four fifty Bluffview Drive, one hundred Blue Hills Drive, one twenty-three Blue Hills Drive, and one forty-seven Blue Hills Drive. Fine thing since last meeting, I have one signed conservation easement I'm holding on to until after town meeting, which I'll pass to Matt, the signature. That one's for four, that's one, that one's for one forty-seven Blue Hills Drive. The attorney for four fifty Bluffview Drive has the conservation for easement for that one, it's reviewing, I should be getting one back shortly. And I'm still coordinating with the property owners of one twenty-three and one oh five Blue Hills Drive for those conservation easements to get signed and sent over to me. The current ones up for construction are four fifty Bluffview and one forty-seven Blue Hills, and that's why those things are kind of moving through fairly quickly on the contractors' ends and need for us to kind of get this through to town meeting for approval. I am being good to the developer, one forty-seven Blue Hills Drive, so he doesn't have to wait for his building permit. I told him he can, I signed off on the permit for him to start construction. But we have the CO, and they won't sign that one until they make sure all the documents are properly signed and filed for that one there to kind of allow them to keep construction going as we're coming into a colder season and they might get foundations in before the freeze and frost and stuff there. So looking to move this on to town meeting, I believe there may be a legal notice and a date for that, if I'm correct.
Yep, I, yeah, I believe November seventeenth at eight thirty AM, which would be the start of our Board of Selectmen meeting, second meeting in November.
Okay.
Thanks, Kevin. Is there a motion to set the town, special town meeting for the purposes of these conservation, acceptance of these for conservation easements on Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, at eight thirty AM?
Yeah, I'll make the motion or second.
Sandy and Lou, good. Further questions or comments?
Yeah, Kevin, so November seventeenth, it's a little ways off. We should fully, we should have all the input we need from the homeowners by that date?
We have two of them signed. I'm trying to get the other two, but yeah, we're, I'm working on that, correct. Or they say we'll be notified that that's going to town meeting. I'll hear back from them.
So there's three, okay.
There's two, there's two outstanding right now.
Which is fine right now, I get it, but by the seventeenth, I would imagine that needs to be lined up and squared away.
Right, I mean, as long as the commission proves that we just need, we can get signatures afterwards, they just have to be aware of that, the process.
Well, I mean, listen, we could take it up at the town meeting, but my sense is that, I'm not sure that we would, we would approve something at a town meeting that requires individual landowners commitments without having that commitment prior to the meeting.
It's a, I don't think Peter can jump in, it's like, well, Carmen, of their planning and zoning approval,
approval.
That this gets signed prior to their building permit, so if they don't commit now, they have to commit before they get a building permit. That's a part of their approval for subdivision.
But if they're not signing now, that seems like an indication that they have some objection to it. You know, not just that we were unable to get their signature. I mean, if someone needs to go up there and bring it to them and knock on the door and wait or.
Um, one of them's an empty lot right now, so.
Oh, sure. Okay, makes no sense then, okay.
No, there's no permit for that, so it's.
Right, and, and what we have in front of us, the notice for the special town meeting, I don't know if anybody read it, but it is the acceptance of four conservation easements. It does not specify what time. Those, those definitions are in, as Kevin just mentioned, the planning and zoning approval for the project and the issuance of permits or certificates of occupancy, so without those, this is just allowing us to accept those easements whenever they become appropriate, available.
Thank you, understood.
Got it. All right, anything further? Eric Dunn, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Hi, we're setting the town meeting.
That's exactly, and which, which town meeting could eventually say that, no, but.
Right, I get it.
Right. Selectman Haberda.
Hi.
Selectwoman Renner.
Hi.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Hi.
And I will be an I as well, and motion carries. Item eleven, consider and take possible action to schedule a public hearing date of twelve, one, twenty twenty-five to consider an ordinance amendment to chapter two forty-seven, article ten of the town code, veterans' property tax exemption to adopt options available under Public Act twenty-five, one sixty-eight. I don't see, I don't see Pete here, or Becky's here, right?
Matt.
Hi, Beck. Want to just give a little Reader's Digest version of what we're doing and why we're doing it?
Also here.
Okay, Pete, sorry, I didn't see there. Whoever, whichever one of you wants to handle it, go ahead.
Go ahead, Beck, you want to start?
The state recently allowed towns to adopt some local ordinances to change the new veterans exemption that exempts a dwelling on the property. They allowed towns to adopt adding two acres of the house lot. They also established a local ordinance to place a cap on the median, using the median assessment. It's essentially a cap on the amount that we can exempt dwelling for. And if somebody who was eligible for the ordinance, but their spouse passed away before the state statute was adopted, you can go backward in time and allow that up to a date of your choosing prior to October first, twenty twenty-four.
Got it. Thank you, Becky. One, one of the things of note here is that unlike actions that often are taken by the legislature, this, this, this statute enabling this was an opt-in for municipalities, so it was not a, an unfunded mandate. They gave each community the opportunity to do this as opposed to so many of the programs and so many, so much of the legislation that requires municipalities to do it, so. I will say that I've had some significant interest from the, the two veterans organizations here in town. Both the, both the Post and, and Foreign VFW have, have urged that we move and, and adopt this provision. So just wanted to, that, that's, that's, that's the background. Any questions?
Yes, I, I'm in favor of this, but since we have some alternatives, I'm thinking that Becky's going to make a recommendation and then shouldn't we discuss it and agree on what we're going to bring to the town meeting?
Yes, we have, yeah, we have, we have, we have time between now and the town meeting. We've got two, we've actually got two more meetings that we could, we'd do that and
Okay.
I think, I think Becky's recommendation, I think Becky's recommendation is going to be that we adopt it with the, with the option of the cap on the, on the cap as the median price of lots, which, so that, I, I think that's really, it's a binary on yes or no, are we doing it? And secondly, are we opting for the, for the cap in terms of the, the, the value, the median value, so.
All right.
Becky, is that, is that safe to?
Um, yeah, you can choose to, like I said, limit the assessment, say if you had a two million dollar home, you could say, well, the average median home value in the town of Guilford is, you know, four hundred thousand dollars, so we're going to limit it to that.
Okay, so, so you'll put together your recommendation and quantify the amount of, the total amount that we're talking about, basically?
Yep.
For us to look at before, okay, got it, thank you.
There is also a provision where you, the Board of Selectmen will have to pick a date and how, you know, when we would determine some, a surviving spouse is eligible for this, so it wouldn't be eligible except for the October twenty-twelve, twenty twenty-five list and beyond. But you could say, for instance, that someone who's the surviving spouse of a totally, totally disabled veteran who would have, would have qualified if he had survived or she had survived as of, and pick a date, so Becky will talk about a, a date, you know, that you go back to twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two and make a proposal as part of the ordinance for that as well.
Okay.
Right, and let's remember, we can be presenting an ordinance at that meeting, at the public hearing. But the public hearing is designed to get input as to whether or not that recommendation or a subsequent recommendation or revised recommendation could be adopted. And that's the result of the public hearing, which then we would act on at the Board of Selectmen meeting immediately following it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say one final thing that, you know, Matt, we had discussed, that there's a potential provision for deter, accepting someone as being totally disabled based strictly on individual unemployability. That's a, you know, judgment call whether you want to go that far. But we'll have, we'll have that teed up for discussion as well.
Great. All right, all right, so is there a motion to set a public hearing on a, on a, consider an ordinance amendment to chapter two forty-seven to adopt additional municipal options available under recently enacted Public Act twenty-five, one sixty-eight? Is there a motion?
All moved.
Second, Sue, Sue and Sandy, there we go. Any further comments or questions? Eric Dunn, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Hi.
Selectman Haberda.
Hi.
Selectwoman Renner.
Hi.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Hi.
And I'm also an I, so that motion carries. Thank you, Becky and Pete, on that.
Yep.
All right, all right, on to item number twelve, appointments and resignations, and we've got a, got a host of them today. So let me start with discuss and take action to appoint Sonia Brickwith as the Health Director for the Town of Guilford for a four-year term, just as a way of background that is required under state statutes that we affirm our, our, our choice of Health Director on four, every four years. So is there a motion for that?
All moved.
Second?
Second.
Lou, Sandy and Lou. Any further comments or questions? Eric Dunn, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Hi, and thank you and congratulations to Sonia.
Well, or condolences. Selectman Haberda.
Hi.
The Selectwoman Renner.
Emphatically, I.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
I, for sure.
Great, great. All right, twelve dot two, discuss and take action to appoint Janine Wacklowski as alternate member on the Economic Development Commission for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thanks, Charles. Let me try, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Hi.
Selectman Haberda.
Hi.
Selectwoman Renner.
Hi.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Item twelve dot three, discuss and take action to accept the resignation of Tom McCabe McCabe as a regular member of the Historic District Commission. I'd make that that nomination with appreciation and regret. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, good. Any further, any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Hi.
Selectman Haberda.
Hi.
Selectwoman Renner.
Hi.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Hi.
And I'm also an I. Twelve dot four, discuss and take action to elevate Bernie Pitterman from alternate to regular member of the Historic District Commission for a term to expire January twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine. Is there a motion?
Oh, so moved.
Sandy, a second?
Second.
Thanks, Charles. Any comments or questions? Eric Dunn, let me try your minds, those in favor, Selectman Federici.
Hi.
Selectman Haberda.
Hi.
Selectwoman Renner.
Hi.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Twelve dot five, discuss and take action to reappoint Brian Wiley to the Pension Committee for a term to expire November thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, second?
Oh, second.
Thanks, Charles. Any comments, questions? Eric Dunn, let me try your minds. Those in favor, Selectman Federici.
Hi.
Selectman Haberda.
All right.
Selectwoman Renner.
Hi.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Hi.
And I am also an I. Twelve dot six, discuss and take action to reappoint Vicki Gersten to the Economic Development Commission to, for position, the seat is expired November thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. Is there a motion? I'll make that motion. Here a second, second. Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Hi.
Selectman Haberda.
All right.
Selectwoman Renner.
Hi.
Select woman Ruoff?
Hi.
And I'm an eye as well. 12 dot seven, discuss and take action to reappoint Ann Robinson to the Board of Assessment Appeals for term to expire February 1, 2030. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make that so moved.
You've got it. And a second?
Second.
Lucky Lou. Uh, let me try your minds. Uh, those in favor, selectman Federici?
Hi.
Selectman Havert?
Hi.
Uh, select woman Renner?
Hi.
Select woman Ruoff?
Hi.
Uh, and I'm also an eye. Uh, 12 dot eight, discuss and take action to accept the resignation of Anthony Signano from the Affordable Housing Commission. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I was gonna say, I, yeah, with regret.
With, with, with appreciation and regret.
Appreciation and regret.
Got it. Uh, let me try your minds. Uh, those in favor, selectman Federici?
Hi.
Uh, selectman Havert?
Hi.
Select woman Renner?
Hi.
Select woman Ruoff?
Hi.
And I am also an eye. 12 dot nine, discuss and take action to accept the resignation of Al DiMarzio from the Marina Commission. Is there a motion, uh, with, uh, appreciation and regret?
I'm moving with regret.
Great. And Sue, second. Thank you. Uh, let me try your minds. Uh, those in favor, selectman Federici?
Hi.
Uh, selectman Havert?
Hi.
Select woman, uh, Renner?
Hi.
Select woman Ruoff?
Hi.
And I am an eye as well. Okay. Uh, item 13, request reuse of town property, 13 dot one, discuss and take action to approve a display on the green, uh, request for the Guilford Community Annual Fund Drive, uh, with that ever-present thermometer that hopefully goes right up to the top. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, uh, any comments or questions? Let me try your minds. Uh, selectman Federici?
Hi.
Selectman Hart Havert?
All right.
Select woman Renner?
Hi.
Select woman Ruoff?
Hi.
And I am also an eye. Uh, committee reports, anything, Sandy?
I have three, I have three things.
Okay.
It's going to take about an hour. No. Um, uh, we had, um, a subcommittee meeting of the, um, ad hoc group of, um, for discussing the Park and Recreation Program Fund, which, which, you know, we've been meeting maybe for the past two years, not, not a lot of meetings, but with Pam, Gary, Laura Hartman, Ellen Klow, uh, Mary Jane Malveci and myself. And it was just a, a status report to see, uh, where the program funds, um, stands. And, um, a concerted effort was made to bring the underside balance down to, to what we all hopefully agreed to a manageable amount. And the account had grown over the years due to changes in how programs were managed, but also, um, we, the selectmen, uh, put some ARPA money in it during COVID because some of their receipts were perhaps down, but they did such a good job of managing programs, providing programs even during COVID in, in, uh, interesting ways that, um, the, the, it helped the, the program fund grew. But anyway, um, but however, um, the pro, a lot of the program fund has been spent out on many worthy, um, park and rec initiatives, and each one of them was approved by this board. You know, Pam would come forward and say, I want to do some, uh, uh, something at the Jacobs Beach and it's going to come out of the program fund. So, um, so the, the account is somewhat lower than anticipated at the moment, but that is expected to change as the year progresses. It was agreed by the group that the programs would run as normal and we would continue to monitor the, um, account. And, um, you know, Mary Jane was there with, um, all the financial facts and figures on that. There was discussion also regarding the annual transfer from the program account into the operating budget. It was agreed from this small group that we would be more appropriate to discuss that transfer during the upcoming, uh, budget season. So, uh, there's no action take needed at this time, uh, regarding this report. I just wanted to share it with you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, can I go on?
Item two.
Item two.
Page, page two.
I'm talking, I'm talking fast. Um, this is just a, a mini report on the, um, Woodruff, um, the, um, Affordable Housing Project. Mike Harkin of, of Harkin, uh, is, he's a civil engineer and he has his own company. He lives in Killingworth, but he does a lot of work for the town, but he reported as, uh, an, uh, subcontractor of Neighbor Works New Horizons and gave about a 10-minute report to planning and zoning. And, um, I just zoomed in, so, um, I just listened, but it was very encouraging. He kind of went over, um, all the things that he and other contractors have done in order to submit to DEEP in Hartford all the, uh, information that they need to therefore give their blessing to the project. And it, it was, we knew it was complicated, but it was, it was, uh, when he's used one phrase, he said, I want you to think that at least 100 pairs of eyes look at these things up there. And so I, I've been personally frustrated at the length of time that it's taken to get to this point, but once he said that, I had a little better understanding of, I, I won't call it the delay, but the lengthy process. And so basically he said that, um, his, his work and work of the soils engineer and other professional, uh, people have, have done everything that has been required. It's been submitted to Hartford through to deep and we're just waiting now on them to approve it. And then and only then, from my understanding and the real, realize I'm only one person in this, um, is when we can then, or, or the Neighbor Works New Horizons can then look for the funds from the DOH and, and elsewhere. So, um, it's still, you know, um, a, a work in progress, but I just thought that was a encouraging report.
Thank you.
Okay. And, and the third thing, oh, I almost forgot. All right. The third thing is that, um, I'm a member of another subcommittee, um, trying to, uh, move along the, uh, use, um, and, and, uh, development of the 52 Church Street property. And, um, as you know, we did kind of finally come to an agreement that was going to, um, hopefully make, um, all entities, um, happy or as happy as a compromise is, where we're keeping part of the existing house on the property, removing parts of it. Uh, it will be, the, the, the outside of it will be restored to, um, the, the mid-century modern architecture that the Historic District Commission identified. And, um, we, we're, we're using the services of the in-house, um, architectural firm, and they are going to be giving us a report this Thursday on, um, progress being made about what we're doing to the house and then how the rest of the property, which you know, is going to be designated for parking. And when I say what we're doing to the house, the inside is going to be used for, um, storage desperately needed by park and rec, but we're not fixing up the in, inside of the house to become fancy offices or anything like that. It's mainly a, a structural use of the inside of the house to make sure that if they put something heavy in there, it doesn't crash through to the basement or something. So, um, I, I'll know more after Thursday.
Great.
I'm done.
Thank you, Sandy.
You're welcome.
You've been busy, you've been busy.
I've been very busy.
We like that. Anybody have any questions or comments for Sandy?
Thanks, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, item 15, correspondence, 15 dot one, correspondence from John Phelan regarding a new federal tax credit scholarship program. Um, Ben received Lou, I think you were the one that that came in through, um. I haven't taken a look at the website yet, um, but, uh, yeah, just reading his document, I have a couple of questions. Sounds as if he's anticipating using any of the funds that come in, uh, for tuition to allow Guilford students to attend um, uh, uh, private or parochial schools out of district as well, um, which sort of flies in the face of the, uh, subject line, which, uh, talks about, uh, students attending out of district public schools.
Yeah, I think he's, I talked to John a couple of times about this. I think he is giving that anecdote. Um, but he's actually proposing students coming in and accepting the tuition money. I had mentioned to him, I would bring it up since he sent me the emails and he raised the questions. I also suggest that it's really probably more appropriate to go to the Board of Education first and let them digest it. And there have been other positions taken, um, um, in opposition to this, I believe, by one of the teachers unions. Not locally necessarily, but either nationally or in the state, not positive there. So there, there's, there's a number of issues here, but I did mention that I would pass it on and, and I suggest that he send it to us.
Right.
Sure.
There has, Sue, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, it looks like the ultimate request is for us to sign, uh, to petition a governor, which, um, you know, i- i- if the board of ed supports it and explains the pros and cons to us, we could consider doing, I guess.
It's, it's the first of many steps for this.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll get, I'll get that over to, uh, Dr. Freeman and, uh, Dr. Ballast Tracy, uh, for their consideration. And, and Lou, you're absolutely right. Uh, there has been, there's been ta, a, a significant amount of discussion about this, this program, this federal program and the possibility it has to, um, uh, to decimate some of the urban, uh, uh, public schools uh, with, uh, the, with this, with flight out and the dollars going with it. Um, so it's a, there, there are a couple, there are a couple of sides to this, uh, this opportunity.
Yeah.
Right.
That's right.
We'll, we'll move it along to the board, uh, board event. Great. Okay, um, all right, old business?
I have an old business, as a matter of fact, not to track things down. And it's, and it's good if Kevin's still on, because it involves the trees that have been planted up and down State Street and around the green.
Yep.
Yep. Devin, are you still there? There you go.
Hey, I'm here.
So, um, the, the crew that did all that work did an amazing job. They were, they were fast and efficient and, and, and left things very tidy. But a couple of people asked me, uh, uh, some of these trees are right under the wires and there's some concern about that. What answer to that is there?
The trees selected underneath the wires, the, the tree advisory board, when they looked at the trees and specified the tree locations, um, looked at, um, taller trees, native trees on the, the side of the road away from the wires. Underneath the wires are more ornamental or smaller growing trees. And the trees selected are from the list of trees, um, that EverSource has for appropriate trees underneath the wires.
So that's great. So you have a tree advisory board that's been heard from, you've consulted the EverSource.
Yep.
Uh, a lot of these were all on state roads. I presume the state has been heard.
Correct. The state had to do a review of all the locations that are placed and review the type of trees being planted there also. Um, the trees will grow up into wires, they'll be growing up into the communications wires. And based on the height of tree, they should be away from the power lines, um. And the power company does their trimming every three or four years through there. So they, uh, as part of that trimming should be able to hopefully guide the, um, the tree branches away from those wires as it.
And they would be responsible for that, the power company, and they know that?
Yeah, they get close to the wires, they're prepared for that.
They trim as needed.
Uh, trim as needed, correct.
One of the trees decides to feel its oats and get a little bigger than, than he anticipated?
Right, exactly. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, thank you, because I also had, uh, might have been the same person, but I had somebody ask me too. And I know you talked about this, Kevin, at a meeting, but the bottom line is the town paid for these trees?
The town, the money through ARPA funding, correct. So the town's.
Through ARPA funding, okay.
Yep. So the town's paying through our per funding for the tree planting, overseeing the planting. Um, they're almost done. I think there's about 20 or so trees left from the plant, um, above from Adam's school up. And then there were several trees which had to get relocated due to, um, sightline issues. Trees that were posed, which were blocking signage, which we weren't aware of, and those have been moved over to State Street. So there is about, I think it's 101 trees still being planted. Uh, our, our total of the project would be 101 trees being planted there.
Thank you. Another piece of misinformation I heard was that all the trees were going on Church Street, and that's not, that's not true either. So I'm wondering if, can we, is it appropriate to put out some kind of a notification on social media through, through the town? Maybe.
Um, we did when they started planting that the, um, the, um, trees were being planted on State Highway Route 77, starting at the intersection of Witfield Street and continuing up to the highway, which included the ones in front of the businesses along the green.
Yeah, but just maybe generally to answer that, um, that concern that people seem to have about the way that the tall trees under the power lines, if there was some way to address that and point out to people that the, the trees have been selected so that it's not a problem. I don't know if that's worth doing. I mean, we can't be in the position where we're trying to respond to every.
I mean, sometimes by doing it, you almost feed into it, so sometimes it's just fun.
Yeah.
Well, I think, uh, we'll, we'll, I, I think we'll do a wrap up. It might, might be nice to do a wrap up of the whole project uh, with a summary at the end, how many trees were planted on what roads, et cetera. And, uh, we'll mention something about was done, uh, with the approval of the, uh, the tree advisory board and EverSource, who will do the uh, appropriate trimming to maintain. So we, we can put something together. Uh, Brendan, uh, Brendan Crowley, our, our new communication specialist here in the office is looking for, uh, stories and, and, and things to write so we can post them. And, and even, and even do a press release possible.
I, I, I can tell you, and it's not surprising, Kevin, that you, that you ran all this down, and I appreciate you filling us back in. But the fact that EverSource is aware and will be primarily responsible for anything that becomes an issue with the wires is a great answer. It's what people hear, and I kind of agree with Matt and Sue that, you know, getting something out at the end would make everybody feel better. It's a, it's a, something we should be proud of.
You know, it's a positive, uh, use of the, of the ARPA funds. Yeah, I, I, I agree. I mean, even though you, we did tell people, Kevin, through the meeting and through your initial, um, um, information, but this is like a feel-good story. Why not share it, you know?
Yeah, well, I mean, I took some pictures of them doing work, so I can share those with Brendan too to.
I'm ready.
Go with it, so.
Excellent. Uh, any, any, any other old business? New business? Hearing none, uh, as we're going to have an executive session, uh, relative to, uh, land acquisition committee, um, we'll do public forum now. Uh, and anyone want to wish to address this in the public forum? I thought I saw, I thought I saw Deb Demisus there, but it looks like she's, uh, logged off.
She was, she just logged off.
Okay. Got it.
Or at least it looks like from my screen.
Yeah, mine too, uh, mine too. Okay. Uh, item 19, executive session to review potential property acquisition. Uh, is there a motion to go into executive session for those purposes?
Make a motion to go into executive session?
And Lou and Sandy, um, let me try your minds. Uh, those in favor, selectman Federici?
Hi.
Selectman Havert?
Hi.
Select woman, uh, Renner?
Hi.
Select woman Ruoff?
Hi.
And I'm an eye as well. Uh, we're going to invite Kevin in, uh, I believe Scott, uh, Williams as well. I don't see Gary, um.
I, I'm here.
Oh, you're Samsung. Oh.
Oh, okay. I'm on my phone, that's why.
Oh, gotcha. Samsung SM59, that's great. So, uh, I'd ask Pam.
My name for, for purposes of being anonymous.
Not working, not working when you own up to it. Um, all right, uh, and, and I'm going to invite, uh, you know, uh, Kevin, Scott and, and Gary. So, um, if we could have Pam, uh, Karen and, and Brendan bow out.
Yeah, I'm just going to stay on and monitor because Brendan had to go to a training session, so I'm going to pause your recording and I'll, I'll just, uh,
Got it.
Look for a high sign from you.
All right, well. Uh, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
I'll move.
Second, Sandy and then Sue. Um, during executive session, there are no motions made, no actions taken. But as a result of the discussion, uh, is there a motion to approve land acquisition committee to proceed with an appraisal for, uh, a targeted property, uh, as well as allow them to enter into negotiations at uh, up, at a price up to one that, uh, we discussed in executive session, but cannot be disclosed, uh, publicly at this point. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Matt.
And a second?
I'll second.
Second. Comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Uh, selectman Federici?
Hi.
Selectman Havert?
Hi.
Select woman Renner?
Hi.
Select woman Ruoff?
Hi.
And I'm an eye as well. Thank you. That motion carries. All right, I think we've exhausted the agenda, um, unless there's anything anyone else has, want to talk?
I, I, I don't need the answer today, but there's been talk, you know, just wherever, on social media or elsewhere. How much land is open space and how much the town owns and how much the GLCT owns? I would just like to know those percentages. I don't need to know them today, but, because I keep hearing them sort of, um, lumped together and. Blump together and, you know.
This case, the water company too, for instance.
Yes, and the water company and maybe the state, I I know that we have those color-coded maps, but. I would just love the percentages, I I'm not just expecting anybody to tell me now, but.
Well, I can give it to you, I can give it to you now, as as of the last P O C D, Kevin and Anne are in the process of updating that. For the new P O C D. In two thousand fifteen. There was twenty-two percent of the total acreage in town was open space or conservation. Of that, the Guilford Land Trust had forty-four percent of the open space, Town of Guilford had thirty-one. State of Connecticut had eighteen, private and institutional nine, the Autobahn Society had two percent. And then in addition to that twenty-two percent, the Regional Water Authority has eleven percent of our our acreage, our our town acreage. Locked up in open space. Uh, there's, and then there's some agricultural at seven. Seven percent, that's that, and then municipal, which is our buildings, that doesn't count as open space, but. So open space conservation as of that point was six thousand three hundred and eighty-three acres of the total area. Of twenty-eight thousand nine twenty-two, that has grown somewhat, I don't think it's grown exponentially. But it has grown a little bit, both as a result of the town's acquisitions and the land trust acquisitions, so. Those numbers will be available soon, but you can, pretty safe to say twenty-two percent is open space and then eleven percent is Regional Water Authority. So that's thirty-three percent of the mass is is open space. Kevin, how did I do that, is that all right?
I guess Kevin had left us maybe.
Kevin, you're muted.
Sorry, sorry, I just working updating that for the municipal plan for land acquisition. And should be able to get you some update numbers about a couple of weeks. I'm currently smoothing those out right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I I'm not sure the needle has moved substantially, but it has moved up a little bit over the last ten years, so.
So was the big gas, oh yeah, because the gas property purchase was before twenty fifteen, so that's already in that percentage.
That's already in it, yeah.
Right, that's in it, yeah.
Uh, while while we're batting that around, Charles. There's been rumors that the water company may be looking to to. Sell off some properties, is there any validity to that?
No, the prop, well. Yes, but there's any properties that I believe in Guilford, they sold the house a few years ago. It's it. The water company classified.
I gotta log off, Matt, excuse me, guys, I'll see you, I'll see you all soon.
Okay.
The short answer is no, and any of the properties are are small parcels. They they can't sell off any of the the larger.
The watershed properties.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't believe there's, I know that there's nothing on the immediate future of any further sales of water authority property in Guilford.
Got it, good, that's that's good to know.
Yep.
Okay, okay, nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
All moved. Second.
Second, and second I sue, thank you, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, we're doing that one as a roll.
Right.
Everybody, have a great day.
Thank you.